Retired.
Few years have passed since then, huh? I turned seventy-six.
Oh, God. I'm sixty-six.
Well, cool. But I'm still working on the pipeline.
The only way, I mean, I don't know how an average person can keep up with any of this.
No, unless you gotta get, raise a family, have a job, that's what you can.
I don't have a job.
You're just here, just sort of fun of it.
Okay, television.
You gonna bring up to, just out of curiosity and just idle talk with your attorney group over there?
Oh, Ron.
It's okay.
What transpired there earlier?
Yeah.
My name is Al, by the way.
Chris Meany.
Chris Meany.
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 Not Meany, sometimes it's.
And you?
Diane York.
Diane. I don't remember Diane, try. Diane, Chris. My wife, you know, where you from? And you?
I'm in Maybrook and work in Montgomery branch. Twenty-five years now. Corner Seventeen K two.
I'm fascinated by working so peaceful.
You go to the Hampton World?
Yeah, we get treated a lot better.
My wife and I have a property right there. On Bracken Road, Seventeen K. Wife working, that's what's going on.
Twenty warehouse. What signal is it on? He needs me.
Yeah, he'll give us a break now.
Oh, boy. Now, do you know any of these people first? See, that's what's wrong.
I'm only, well, hopefully, I've been here twenty-two, twenty-two years. My wife was born and raised here. She may know some of them.
Boom, that's right, exactly.
My wife's law, she was born and raised here, so she's ninety-one, so she knows almost everybody in town.
That's a nice picture.
Oh, yeah, you go, beautiful, right? This form came out from Cold, Cold, uh, Board.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome all to regularly scheduled meeting for the Town Montgomery Planning Board for Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand nineteen. As we customarily do, we'll have ten minutes for comments for items not on tonight's agenda. There are agendas on the front table, anyone like to follow along? Anyone like to make a comment on something not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll go right to our first regular item, which is Bracken Road Properties LLC, Bracken Twenty warehouses. This is on Bracken Road and Leonard's Drive. SEU permit and site plan in a two lot subdivision. This is initial opening of a public hearing, representing the applicant is Dave Young from Jason. How are you, Dave?
Good, how you doing?
If you could fill us in and give us a brief explanation of the project and we'll open the floor.
Okay, thank you. I'll be real brief here. We basically have a project, as you said, at the intersection of Bracken up top and Leonard's Drive on the side. It's an original nineteen point four eight acre parcel. We're subdividing that into two parcels. First one, one A, on the west would be nine point three five acres. One B will be ten point one three acres. Essentially, we've split it right down the middle where there's a drainage channel coming down through in between the two sides. The purpose of the project is to provide two warehouses, one of eighty thousand square feet and one of sixty thousand square feet, along with associated parking and truck dock in the back of each facility. Lot one A will have thirty-three employee parking spaces out front. Will have twenty loading dock truck bays and fourteen additional parking spaces for trucks in the back of the facility. One B will have thirty employees, fourteen loaded, well, it's not fourteen, it's nine loading dock spaces, excuse me, and fourteen truck parking areas. The both facilities will be served by town fire water from the main on Leonard Drive and on Bracken. Fire protection water supply. And then each site will have an individual domestic well that will provide potable water for the, for the facilities. Sanitary sewage will be sent by gravity to a pump station on each site, on each site, and pumped out to the forest man in front of the property out on Bracken Road. The stormwater management will be taken care of by bio retention areas, as you see here. And then attenuation basin back here, retention basin. And then the one additional permit here is the wetlands will have three thousand and thirty square feet disturbed. That permit's been applied for, from the Corps of Engineers and has been received back, approved. So that side has the Corps of Engineers wetland. There's a DEC wetland on one B with the associated hundred foot adjacent area, which basically takes up over half of that site. So everything's pushed between the two wetlands areas for that, that warehouse site. And with that, we're seeking a special exception use and site plan approval as well as the two on sub.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience would like to make a comment or has a question on this project? Okay, Board? Anyone have any questions, comments they'd like to make at this time?
I'll clarify one thing, second parcel feet that these. I'm not quite sure that I remember. Parking's supposed to be back.
You want me to answer that, or?
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, we had brought that up and we had discussed that. Your regulations say that that setback is from a collector road, specific high volume roads, and that's where that setback applies. It doesn't apply to this road.
So, yeah, I'm saying this is not a collector road.
Correct.
Or a town road, okay? That's been determined in the brief, I guess.
Yeah, it's in our zoning. I believe the collector road roads are listed in our zoning.
It's, it's somewhat of a decision, but for certain roads.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Rose?
Have you been in contact with the fire department for their comments?
We, we have, but we have not received anything back. So we keep on contacting them, but haven't received anything back then.
Now, you've received information from Town Engineer Mike Aiello as far as the sewage treatment ability?
Yes.
And you've got that, that letter?
That is correct, yep.
The will serve letter, I believe it is?
Yep.
That will serve. Anyone else? Yes, John?
Dave, any precautions to encourage traffic or allow traffic only to go left on the bracket and not toward Seventeen K?
Uh, we would be open to that if that's what the Board requests.
Yeah, we're making every effort not to send traffic toward Seventeen K. Everything toward, you know, truck traffic then is going toward two oh eight.
It's not shown that way on the plan yet, but we will add that.
I think we've asked everybody.
Yeah.
No right turns out over Seventeen K. We get any architecturals on this, Dave? See what the building's gonna look like?
Yes, we submitted those, all four sides of each building. They were done by the.
Yeah, they were done by, oops, sorry, John Fuller, T E? Is that the one? I'm sorry, I see I have a different John. Do you have him with you? Could we see that? Probably not.
I don't think I actually have him with me, I'll be checking.
We're looking for the architecturals on the building, but what it's gonna look like?
Yeah, it was done by, I don't.
Wait, what's this?
All I have is this.
Yeah, this is M. Is that?
Nope. We're straight down the hall. Yeah, that's it, exactly.
This is like the one across the street.
Well, there's, there's two.
I hear it's similar.
Sure.
Yeah, you came, you came. You're going in, yeah. That's, that's just part of traffic, you know, trucks coming out.
All right, so we have signage. Can you hear from the county on this too? We haven't heard back from the county?
Take the band up north for around Seventeen K.
From the county, signage. We have the architecturals, fire department. We have the will serve letter. You got the AC OE permit from the Army Corps. We need lighting and landscaping.
They said to October fourth.
That's the landscaping?
Um, he said that the Orange County Department of Planning consent the fourth of October. So, you should have heard. Maybe somebody could check in with them to see what's going on, if you don't mind. Yes, Andrew?
We have a comment letter out October second. I guess one of the, one of the things for, on the site plan going to you, the, the lot one B has the two driveways entering out on the bracket. Like, I, I think you should look to try to combine those. They're very close together. The building is forcing it so it's difficult. That's what's taking it. No other physical obstruction out there preventing from connecting those two. I think that would be improved if we asked your cars coming out on the same driveway. Sorry? Yeah.
Your comment letter hasn't been responded to yet?
It has not. We, we have, we are responding to it.
Yeah, we're probably waiting to see how tonight went first. Okay. Your comments been addressed yet, Leslie, or we're still waiting on?
We have two minutes.
Okay. Any comments to be addressed? Rich, you had some info?
Yeah, Dave, you'll get the affidavit of regularity and any green cards that you may have received back, any envelopes that came back, you know, those are limited. And I can't find the current assessment list. I think you probably have that, because you gave the receipts. You can submit all of once.
Okay.
But Dave handed in the white receipts from the post office, so November first, all the mailings were done. I just can't confirm that everyone was.
They did their own list.
They did their own list.
That's why I didn't come from the assessment.
Okay. So hopefully, this is based on last July first assessment rule. We did publish a notice in the Waukesha Times and it was posted downstairs.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Okay, so you could address a comment. Get the lighting and landscaping, you have the lighting plan bills, we're good, okay?
The light, the landscaping has also been signed, has it not?
Yes.
So we'll have to get on that.
Okay.
Okay. The signage to keep the truck traffic off of Seventeen K, from going to Seventeen K? We need the county comments, we'll check, we'll back, check back with them. Yes, and Richard, there?
Yeah, just on the multiple driveways, our code requires that we combine wherever possible. I'm assuming that lot one A and one B could not possibly share a driveway due to the wetland? Am I right about that?
The wet, that would take a, another permit with the Board.
So our code requires the Board look at that and conclude why separate driveways would be allowed. That's a separate question from two on lot one B. I'm just raising the point that we try to merge even side by side lots. So hopefully, they'll take a look at that.
Okay. So if there aren't any other comments, I'll entertain a. Will we get comments back soon, you think, Dave, on this?
It'll be next week.
It'll be next week before we have them?
Yeah.
We have one hearing on, at seven thirty on the twenty-fifth. I think at this time, this is the only one we have. That's the only one, that's Autumn Sky. Do this one at seven thirty-five? Two weeks, okay? Come back? See, you know, hopefully you'll have these, get us the affidavits and you can address our comments. We'll get your landscaping and hopefully lighting, we're working on that. So motion to continue this hearing, adjourn this hearing to the twenty-fifth of November at seven thirty-five? By Rose, seconded by Rich. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And for everyone's notice, this is, this will be your notice. You won't get another, another card in the mail, another letter in the mail. Next this evening is Nelson and Popowick, Old South Plank Road in New York State, Route fifty-two. Lot line change, decision. Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good. Okay, maybe just hold on to these for now, because they're no different than what we have already, I believe.
So, look, they have, they have changed on, they've requested that.
Okay. Okay. All right, yeah, because if we have a couple of questions?
I can take those in there.
Yeah, take that one. Maybe the, maybe we've got better information. One of the big questions that we had, the concerns we had was with the, the bulk table. It was confusing. We couldn't understand where the measurements were and where they were coming from. Yeah. Right, right.
Is this the same plan we got September sixteenth?
No, no, they've amended the bulk table. It looks like that that's. One of the questions we had, one of the big questions was if these numbers on the bulk table, we couldn't figure out how they pertain to the map. There weren't any numbers shown on the map. Normally, a survey will show an offset from a house corner to the boundary line. It'll have a dimension line and then that dimension will be shown on that line. We have updated numbers here, we should look to be more, more, yeah. We couldn't quite understand all of these, this lot, you know, here's a lot with parcel one. You know, this is better now. And then, you know, I think two thirteen, forty, twenty. Sorry, see, I, I still don't know if that's right. All right, well, we had a couple other questions. Our, our code allows for the highway taking on a town road to be twenty-five feet from the center of the road. In a couple places, we don't have that here, especially where this corner is.
Normally, we would accept a hatched area with a note on the map offering that to the town if the town ever needed it for highway purposes. I think it's mainly in the area where the new lot lines are coming. It looks like that corner is right on the edge of Drury's pavement, quite a bit away.
Right, so there's actually pavement, the road was under here at one point. And it's actually buried, it's there, but buried. And so this was evidently from a trench, and it was used in stone, petroleum. So they use a stone for that stone wall, so.
It's a nice stone wall, throw it out there. You don't own this at all, is that true?
As far as that, well, the neighbor across the road thinks it does.
Yeah.
Used to be the road bed and it got pushed to the south. In fact, the current tax map doesn't show this current configuration. Well, we, we always try to clean up anything we can, but I guess the problem is the Nelsens don't own this piece. So we can't make you offer it to the town because.
You already own it.
Well, we don't really know what owns it. If the old roads were not always owned by the town, they were easy. So I guess we won't go into that complexity. What we would ask, and we were hoping your design professional might be here. Seems like in this area here, it's kind of tight and maybe this area could be offered with a note. We're not asking you to convey it now, but if the highway department ever needed to widen, I doubt they would want to go past your stone wall, because it kind of goes up.
Right.
So this point seemed to be, I'm assuming Drury is the pavement they're showing us. And this point, this point's real close.
Yeah.
So, now I didn't run it way up here, do you think we have twenty-five feet or should head to the north?
Well, this is a thirty scale, it's not, and we don't. We do it up at the corner.
Up top, you have it.
Up top, we've got it. Down here, it's, it's twenty. Twenty from there, basically, it's not even that down here.
Can I ask another question, it's related to this? Is there any reason this little job is going to Mr. Popowick? See this where I'm talking around this?
Because of the fall of the land there, it would be another option to get a driveway within the side of his property to go later.
Okay.
As possible, I want to help him sell it, because the lot fifty-two was hazardous.
Yes.
I'm gonna comment.
Yeah, I, yeah, I gotta go.
So if that, and it would be cheaper just move that way to escalate. Quite a chunk of land down here, yeah.
So that explains.
Yeah.
I think Ryan, yeah. Again, what we've done in the past is, we have some standard language. A note on the map that says this area, whatever it be, twenty-five feet from the center, is offered to the town for highway purposes if it ever needs it. And it may never need it, maybe not in our lifetime, but we're nervous, especially here, I didn't realize. When we head south, it looks like it's fine. And again, you can't give us what you're going on.
It makes it down here too, it looks like. It makes it in here too, twenty-five.
It does?
Yeah.
So do you think it's only off North Drury?
You say just off of North Drury in this, like from here to probably here, to probably somewhere in here, there's a strip.
And I would think that the surveyor could show that on the final map and get the note, that could be a condition of approval, I don't see any reason to hold it up till then.
Does anybody understand?
Do you understand what we're saying?
Yeah.
Do you have any problem with it?
Not really.
Yeah, sure, Rose.
What I was watching today, this stone wall here is aligned here, but there's another stone wall that goes up a little bit more. Yeah, because this, I mean, I have pictures of this, right?
Yeah, so ours ends, but.
It keeps on going, so why don't you continue the stone wall here? Because what, if there's a stone wall that goes like this, right? And then it goes up, and goes this way. Did you ever see that? Okay.
Because it does, there's an abrupt end to it, I don't know.
Yeah, some of it, some of this has fallen down.
Yeah, oh, no, this is the very, very end.
That's the very end.
This is, yeah, so we won't get it there. Hoping that it would ended up.
And actually, we, we, even while we lived there, because work was existing, prior to us, we had actually had people stopping cars and.
Taking stones. Anyways, yeah, so I didn't want to give up my stone wall.
This note could be on the other side of the wall, we're not asking you to dedicate the wall, but just from the wall over to the Drury lane. Or whatever it would be to get 25 feet.
And this is to Golden Hill, not to Hill Road.
So that should be changed.
I understand why the surveyor did it because actually. That line happens, things like that obstructs.
Yeah, so, yeah, I did find it real helpful though, because.
Didn't show this, yeah, right.
Today, there were skid marks, somebody went in here, their first skid mark, so.
Yes, yeah, there, it happens.
So.
Not your, or is it, we're just talking. Yeah, I have no idea what that is.
Yeah, 25 feet, yeah, wherever it needs it. So, we're, um. Some offsets shown from the building corners to match the updated bulk table, so we can understand. And then, the area of the road to be dedicated to the town, and we have a standard note for that, correct? And so it's 25 feet off this physical center line, and it'll be on each whole parcel, just a note on the map, that's all it'll be. Was there anything else that we needed to be added to this map? Why do you? Pass something through, I think.
Nope, specked their houses.
Have an added tax lot across the street?
Two and a half way home. You don't want to miss this excitement.
There's a wood fence and a small parcel.
Yes.
They're going to stay here though.
It's optional, I mean, I have a side, is it going to run trees or come on the border to? Like a way separating the driveway so it's no longer one driveway, next to two parcels. Yeah, but I do want to plant four Christmas trees. I mean, at some point, the. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, gardening now, I want to do something, a little garden, a little space back there. Then I got severely on the side, I got no room whatsoever. Yeah, yeah, something, I like to put aside a little thing.
Does the board want to have each hundred pieces of stuff, like a lot, because the note is a little bit vague as to where, you know, and, and it's not really clear how it would be determined how there would be compliance with that.
Do we want to just remove the note? You can, you're going to plant it however you want, whenever you want.
Oh, yeah, maybe not, but, you know.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we put the note on the map, then we're kind of tied to it, and you are too, so if we just remove it, then.
Then if you change.
You do whatever you want.
Okay.
If you just remove this.
Yeah, I mean, we were concerned, I think originally, that, that it, that there be a physical break there. It's, I actually feel better that you're considering the driveway in North Drury because that's a terrifying driveway.
Right, yeah, I teach my son to control traffic by stopping.
It's a silver from offset.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, having either one go through.
Yeah, it's very, yeah.
Yeah, terrifying, so I'm, I'm, I'm really actually happy.
Sorry, your son's a teenager.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, except for the fact that also that driveway isn't, it's very near to the house.
I guess my actual address could be my hometown.
If you change your driveway, that would be.
Yeah, yeah, whatever it takes.
I've marked up a print here, tax lot and neighbors across the street, the 25-foot strip. Note number six, that will get you as far as what that, this pertains to, this, this 25-foot line off the pavement. And then some offsets that pertain to the bulk table, just dimension lines, the surveyor will know what that is. This is a print for him. Anybody else have anything else? Alright, I think that's fairly simple, um, just some cleanups. So. So, with that, if anybody else has, if anyone else has any questions?
Well, on the small parcels, close to the lot line, first number. So I don't know, should we show, there's stuff going on there.
We're not going to make the movement, are we, well?
Of course not, so just ignore them.
I think, you know, it's a distance, it's a distance, it's there now. So, um, so of course we would need to waive the hearing. And just, um, off-line change, two options, maybe. I'd contain a motion to waive the hearing by John, seconded by Ryan, all those in favor signify by saying aye. We have a quick little approval resolution here. And it'll be conditioned upon these corrections being made to the map, but you won't have to come after.
Do you want those digitally right away, and then can you send them, if I may, if you, please, can you have those, me? That, that's all, because I mean, I'm so sorry to be completely blocking because I would ask that, up down, just to make sure it's correct before sending them on.
Yeah, so we can say. So we can still send them digitally?
Yeah.
And then we'll get, we'll get that checked, and then before we have to make my laws and more things, it'll be signed, goodbye.
We'll get soon to get you the bulk back there.
Alright, so, if you bear with me, I shouldn't be too long. Negative declaration, this is a draft negative declaration, Town Montgomery Planning Board, Nelson and Popowick Lot Line Change Determination. Please take notice that according to the provisions of 6 NYCRR, Part 617.7, the Town of Montgomery Planning Board is lead agency. Having reviewed and considered a short environmental assessment form and plans, as determinative actions as cited and described below will not have an adverse impact on the environment. And a planning board therefore has adopted a resolution to this effect. Lead agencies at Town of Montgomery Planning Board name a project Nelson and Popowick Lot Line Change subdivision. This will be a preliminary final approval of residential lot line change subdivision. Project description background and reasons supporting the NACD. The applicants have proposed a lot line change subdivision involving two occupied residential lots in the RA-2 district. The lot line change will correct a severely undersized landlocked parcel of Popowick. Impacts on land use plans or zoning regulations. As noted in the project description, the action will correct an existing undersized landlocked parcel, providing it with road frontage and additional land area. This is an improvement. The receiving lot would become compliant with the zoning bulk requirements while the sending lot would remain compliant. It would create no conflict with municipal land use plans and will not impair the use of either law. The Orange County Planning Department has found no evidence that intermunicipal or countywide impacts would result from its approval. Impacts on land. There would be no significant adverse impact on land as the action simply involves a 1.341 acre transfer of vacant land to a non-conforming law. Impacts on community character. Because the action is consistent with planning and land use regulations, and there will be no changes to the use of the parcels. There will be no direct or indirect impact whatsoever on community character quality. Impact on air resources and transportation, impact on energy use, conservation and renewable energy. Impact on water resources includes flooding drainage and erosion, be no impacts. Impacts on plants and animals, no adverse impacts there, no agricultural resources are impacted. Impact on aesthetic, historic and archaeological resources, be no impact also. Impact on open space and recreation, no new lots are being created. No other potential areas of impact have been identified, accordingly, this negative declaration has been issued. Date of action, November 12, date of mailing, November 13. Any comments on the NACD? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the NACD, Bill, seconded by Rich, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And last would be to grant approval with conditions that we get the map cleaned up and get those items we discussed, put on the map and get it checked prior to signature. So I entertain a motion to grant approval by John, seconded by Jay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, get your surveyor to get us that stuff, we'll get it reviewed and we'll be right back then. Thank you. Next tonight is FedEx Freight, nearly town road, amended site plan, parking lot expansion. Any comment or discussion on FedEx?
Yeah, Fred, I think the only thing on this one is, I just want to make sure that we go back to original approval conditions and verify that the number of employees and wastewater flow and all that is still in line with the original projections.
Okay. Okay, so I entertain a motion to circulate. Declare lead. Okay, motion by Bill, seconded by Rich, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
I have, I have asked Dave to email me the full EAF.
Okay.
I was only going to circulate, just the full EAF itself with the notice, um, they, they made a very nice package that had additional information that is useful to the planning board. But the other agencies aren't very interested in a very nice package that is, is, doesn't need to be sent to full, so, you know, that's what's going on.
I'll send you the, the full EAF.
Would you want the site plan with that also, or?
No, I, I don't, I don't send the site plan along with, um, the, the full EAF is very useful because it, it shows at least the project's height. And, and if other agencies want more information, they can ask for it, but then they only get what they've asked for instead of just, again, at least they pay for it and it's in the works.
Jay, if you take over for Post Road, the state's moral court, I'm recused, I'm an adjoining landowner.
Okay, I'll, I'll accept the motion to recommend to the town board a road bond reduction request.
The bond rate total was $239,601.83.
So, motion does not affect, by Rose, seconded by Ryan, all those in favor, if I can get any more. Maybe you want to, I assume you're going to adopt this resolution, and that's fine, but maybe you should include a request if the town board asks the developer to restore open space number four, which is the crown jewel of the open spaces, that three and a half acres to the north of the new road. It's been used as a staging area for the last year, year and a half. And my fear is that it'll end up being, the town board will end up accepting a conservation easement, and the site will stay as it is, there's stuff piled there, and hopefully it's only topsoil. That's probably not in the bond, and I'm not suggesting that the bond be changed because it's a fairly minor matter, but I'd like to get that issue in front of the town board. As soon as possible, I don't know what the timing is to accept both roads, don't forget there's two roads here, the moral court and the new connection. And I just think it'd be opportune for your motion not only to approve the bond amount, but authorize us to send a note to the town board about open space number four. And by the way, open space number one is the basin itself on the other side of the new connection. Obviously, it's not done yet, but I don't know how much more work needs to be done. Did you see the big boulder?
Yeah, I was going to ask you the question, which one is it? Is it one, the one with the boulder?
Open space one is the one with the boulder on the south side of the new road connection.
Right.
Open space four is the three and a half acres on the north side of the new road connection.
That runs all the way to Albany Post Road.
Yes, and that open space number four was a nice hayfield, which the board was trying to preserve.
Right.
Maybe someday it could be a hayfield again, but you're not going to plant hay in it now. And it wouldn't necessarily be part of the public improvement because actually it wasn't supposed to happen, quite frankly. So I would just suggest your motion, if you don't mind, include that so we can put both matters in front of the town.
One other, one other piece to that is, our office at the request of the town board reviewed the meets and bounds with the written descriptions as well as the plat. We found some discrepancies, we sent them back over to the town attorney's office. The board, somebody should make sure that those are implemented. I don't know if that's going to be part of your motion or not, or?
I don't see why it couldn't be if everyone agrees.
It should all be part of one, right?
Yes.
So, the motion then would be, one, to approve the reduction of the road bond, two, to send a note to the town board regarding the restoration of the hayfield in open space number four. And three is to send a note to the town board regarding the plat changes.
Discrepancies in between the meets and bounds on the written description and the plat.
Sue, did you get that?
No, discrepancies on what?
On the meets and bounds, M-E-T-E-S and bounds. And the written, and the plat. With the restoration of open space four.
Discrepancies on meets and bounds and the plat.
I don't know, I'll leave to others that big boulder, some, some things, it looks kind of neat, it doesn't look like it's going to be easily movable.
Which is probably why it's there.
At least by there, more than a week ago, and.
You didn't stop in?
They, they just cut. They just cut, they made a road in and, the, the wayman and the base corporate, they just dumped the dirt and we decided.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the roads themselves because our engineers will make sure that the roads get done right and the drainage. But restoring the open space area is a little out of the ordinary.
Yeah, well, we have two, we have two contingent motions now, should we just make it a third if they have to clarify the, the open space one?
It can hurt.
It can hurt, right, so, Sue, is that possible, we could add that to open space one?
So this is a, the third note to the town board regarding restoration of open space one to be stormwater retention pond, as I recall.
So that should be in the bond. I'm not worried about the remaining work to be done, that's why you're. And that should be in the bond. I'm not worried about the remaining work to be done, that's why you're still holding, what, two-hundred-and-seventy thousand? Obviously, work can be done.
My comment was, I just hadn't, there wasn't much done there, other than coming to the road and this stuff, dirt and stuff.
Well, I'm sure that's why there's two, over two hundred still held. I mean, this road isn't being accepted, these roads aren't being accepted this fall.
Right.
I just think it's important the planning board reminds the town board, it's not just what they see here. And I think one motion could cover everything.
There's no, no moral court cut in yet, there's no, nothing cut in yet.
Oh, yeah, moral court's cut in.
Is it?
Sure.
I don't know what's there, I don't go in there.
And by the way, there are other little pockets of open space scattered through the subdivision, before the town accepts that, and this doesn't have to be in the motion. Maybe somebody should walk those open spaces and make sure that there aren't garbage, or junk cars, or whatever. Been along this subdivision, been along one.
It wasn't originally.
It's, it's good, it's still... Rose, with those amendments, it's good?
Yes.
Ryan's for second, it's good. Okay, so we have a motion by Rose, seconded by Ryan, with those amendments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. There you go, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, next, um, this evening, approval of the September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, planning board meeting minutes.
We have that extension.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can the management go for the eleven?
Give it go for the eleven. Okay, uh, any discussion on the Doyle Staples Lot Line Change Extension? Okay, uh, it'll go out another ninety days to February tenth. Oh, it's week ten, two thousand twenty. Okay, um, entertain a motion to grant that extension for ninety days, by Rose, seconded by John, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we can go to, uh, minutes for September twenty-third.
We have one minor change.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah. It's just, Rich and Leslie had some minor edits. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the September twenty-third planning board meeting minutes, by, by Ryan, seconded by Jay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, yeah, Rose wasn't here. Um, September twenty-fourth, next night, meeting minutes. Okay, any discussion on September twenty-fourth planning board meeting minutes?
I'll give you two less than that.
Just small comments, okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the September twenty-fourth planning board meeting minutes, by John, uh, seconded by Rich, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Okay, November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, planning board meeting minutes. Who wasn't here for that one? Yeah, any comment on November twenty-sixth?
I just had a question, um, it was on page five, you probably don't even need to go there. It was the boat track, two lot subdivision on Bailey Road. Mr. Marshall said the original, uh, test well had high chlorals, and I think it was chloride. I'm pretty sure the problem out there was salt. And so, I took it upon myself to note to Sue, that I thought chloral should be chloride. I can come right out of there.
Yeah, okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, planning board meeting minutes. A motion by Rose, seconded by Rich, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And next to last is Monday. Bill Kelly wasn't here. Uh, Monday, December tenth, two thousand eighteen, planning board meeting minutes. Anything, substance?
Just some finer typos.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the December twelfth, December tenth of two thousand eighteen, planning board meeting minutes, by, by Ryan, seconded by, uh, Rich, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
By the way, great job, folks, a lot of work.
Thanks.
Yes.
Yeah.
They're so well done, because you, you know, you feel like you were there. And it was extremely helpful on some of the projects that we'll be doing now, and remember what all of you said, so, good job.
Okay, um, last but not least, motion to adjourn, by Ryan, seconded by Rose, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you, everybody.